Good evening, good folks, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Work Session for this Monday, October 7th, 2024. Before we get on with our business, a note that our public comment period for work sessions is reserved for the end of the meeting. So you're welcome to give comment at the end of the meeting on anything you wish. You have up to three minutes to provide remarks to the commission. Do encourage you to complete the public comment form at the back of the room. I include your name and home address, though I will not be sharing your home address publicly nor asking you to announce it publicly. That is for our record, but I will be acknowledging what neighborhood you may live in the City of Muskegon or otherwise what township, village, or other city you may be joining us from. We do have phone-in comments as well, so when it comes time for public comment, a phone number will scroll along at the bottom of the screen and I will announce that number. And I'll share that right now, so you can jot it down for later. 231-724-6721. Call in when it says call in public time or public comment at the bottom of the screen. All right, we're gonna get on with our new business. You wanna do roll call first?
Sure. Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Gorman?
Here.
Commissioner Cochen?
Here.
Vice Mayor St. Clair? Absent. Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Kilgo?
Here.
Commissioner Keener? Absent.
All right, thank you. First up, we have Apple Avenue Design Update. And welcome, good sir, if you care to introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Dan Vanderheide, Director of Public Works for the city. I am here today with MDOT to present a update on where things stand with the reconstruction of Apple Avenue currently scheduled for 2026. And in particular, introduce an item that is going to be on the agenda tomorrow evening. A resolution in support of where things stand right now. Hopefully soon. There we go. All right. Excellent timing. So Mark Fredrickson is here. He is the manager of the Muskegon Office of MDOT. He's just to my right here. And I'm gonna do the lion's share of the work here at the podium, but then when it comes time for questions and discussion, if there's anything Mark feels I've said incorrectly, or anything that he feels he can better answer than I, hopefully he'll step up here and do that. Just a quick look at what we're gonna talk about this evening. So this is a long project, so we're gonna kind of review where we are in that timeline. Sort of reintroduce the project so that we're all talking from the same baseline. Go through again where that design is today. Talk about that item that is on tomorrow's agenda, which is a resolution of support. And then introduce a concept that some of you are familiar with, but not all, about turnback possibilities. And then we'll have some discussion and question about that and other things. So again, just to sort of reset and figure out where we are in this process. MDOT is planning to build the project in 2026, but we started already last year in 2023. And we had focus groups made up of businesses, residents along the corridor and in the neighborhoods surrounding it. MDOT, city staff, and various other folks. We did a number of things. We had a couple meetings. We reviewed various concepts a couple times. As usual, we had a Connect Muskegon page, which has remained and is updated right now as of this past week. We then moved into a phase where MDOT sort of took control of things, I guess you'd say. Given that it is their road, they are doing the design and have also their own engagement efforts that are both good to do and required by law. You'll recall that we, back in February, when we gave you the last public update, we talked about some of the things that the city plans to advocate for to MDOT, and I'll refresh those for you here in a second. Various other meetings have been held, including with some of the businesses about a corridor improvement plan and other things that will come down the line. Here we are near the end of 2024. I've highlighted it in teal there. A big part of the reason we're here tonight. MDOT has requested that resolution of support from the city for where things stand now. And going forward, MDOT's going to continue to fill out that design and hold additional engagement meetings with the public, seeking their feedback as the design gains, I guess, detail, we'll call it. In 2025, also in advance of MDOT's project, the city's gonna be doing a couple construction projects. One of which is to replace the lead service lines throughout that corridor, so that those are done before the roadwork. And there's also a project on First Street from Apple South to Hamilton that's needed in order to create a sanitary sewer that will be needed during the 26th project. And then in 2026, Old Center in Town will be a construction site. But it won't be too bad, don't worry. So these are some of the things back in February that we presented and you all agreed to. I shouldn't say agreed to, but expressed support for. We talked about rightsizing the roadway, and there were a few specifics associated with that that we were hoping to engage with MDOT on. Increasing alternatives throughout that corridor, again, with some specifics about bicycle facilities, improved pedestrian, excuse me, improved transit stops. And then pedestrian safety was another goal, including improved sidewalks and ramps and so forth. And then also an attempt to green up the corridor, if you will, so increasing space where grass and plantings and trees can be planted or to make it a more pleasant place to walk and drive. So MDOT has been working on the project, and they have been a great project partner and listened to a lot of the things that we heard and a lot of the things that they heard at their own engagement sessions. And so where things stand as we sit today, or at least the direction that things appear to be heading in, is as I've listed there on this street or this screen, excuse me, a street of three parts. So if you imagine Apple Avenue from the highway toward downtown, it's quite a long street and it goes through a few different transitions, right? Out at the highway, it's a very commercial corridor, very busy, helping folks get to and from not only Muskegon, but Muskegon Township. Lots of restaurants and businesses in that area. Then you pretty quickly move into a pretty residential set of Apple from about Roberts Street. And that continues all the way across Getty to about Wood Street. And that's a tree-lined section. It's got houses on both sides for pretty much the entire thing, except for a little pocket of commercial activity at Getty. And then at the very end, west of Wood, it changes character again and really just becomes essentially part of our downtown street grid. And it serves really as no longer that trunk line, I guess you'd say, but simply as a part of that network that helps folks access all the various things downtown. And the design, as it's shaping up, looks to reflect that. So down where it is simply part of the downtown street grid, it's looking like just two lanes are necessary in order to support that level of activity. I've got the number of cars per day, vehicles per day is what that VPD stands for. These come from traffic counts that MDOT has taken over the last few years. And I just gave an example street there, so that section in terms of traffic carries a similar amount to Creston Street on the east side of the city near the highway. So you can see another two-lane street there. If you've driven on that recently, you'll recall that it pretty easily accommodates that number of vehicles. Wood to Roberts, so moving a little further east back out towards the highway. You'll see about 10,000 to 13,000 vehicles per day in that section, depending on where you take the specific traffic count. Still one lane in each direction, but with a center turn lane now to accommodate additional turning movements into those driveways, into some of the businesses, et cetera. And that's very similar to Lake Shore Drive. That had about 8,500 vehicles per day in 2021, which I think we can all agree it's probably quite a bit busier today than it was three years ago. And I had to go a little further out to find streets of a more similar character, but if you visit our neighbors to the south, Henry, south of Seminole, where it crosses Mona Lake at the bridge there, carries about almost 14,000 vehicles per day in a section very similar to that. And Harvey Street, south of the mall, so not in the section where it's up near Sternberg, but if you go south of the mall, down by where New Costco is hopefully going in, you'll see that section is also very similar and that carries a little over 10,000 vehicles per day. And then out toward the east, back by the highway. Not a lot of changes proposed there. We're gonna do our best to continue to accommodate all the traffic that needs to get in and out of those areas. And as we all know, it's a very busy spot, up to 25,000 vehicles per day, and so we don't plan or don't want to touch too much out there. And so one of the goals, right, and one of the reasons we were advocating for this change to the character of the street is all the different amenities that are possible as a part of the project, right? Increased green spaces, transit, all these things that we were advocating to. One of the specific things that is shaping up is a 10-foot non-motorized facility that would run along the south side of Apple from downtown out to Roberts. Hopefully soon to be connected to a similar facility across the highway and into the township someday. But for now, the plan would be to end that somewhere around Roberts. And just to give you kind of a visual about what we're talking about, these are the two sections that would be changing. So the top picture is a representation of a two-lane section. This is made with a free website tool that allows you to sort of plug and play different pieces of street, kinda like Legos. If you've never checked it out, it's pretty fun, and it's just that name there, streetmix.net is the website. And you don't need to pay anything. You don't even need an account. You can just go there and start playing. So that top picture shows a two-lane section, shows some of the things that we've talked about. This is looking toward downtown, so on the left side you'll see that 10-foot wide pathway that would serve well for both pedestrians. Uses. And you see some other things on the other side of the street, the existing sidewalk. And there's a transit shelter there next to the bus and some more plantings, things like that. Second picture is a three-lane section. You'll see that center turn lane in the middle. And it takes up a little bit more pavement, but still plenty less than is out there now and therefore allows us to plant some trees and have some more green space and continues to provide room for that non-motorized facility. So the reason that the timing is such that I'm presenting to you tonight is that MDOT has reached a point in that design where they're looking for the city's support of the way that the design is shaping up. So as a part of their process, they need the city to pass a resolution that will allow them to continue to study lane reductions in Apple Avenue and, you know, all the other things associated with that design, right? So it is on tomorrow evening's agenda, and I highlighted a few of the important pieces there on the screen. I won't read them out loud to you, but essentially what they do is they acknowledge that the design will right-size the roadway, help to decrease the speed issues that we see out there, increase safety, and essentially offers the city's support for continuing to investigate those items. And happy to take any specific questions now, but again, we'll have some time for discussion and questions here in just a few. The last thing I'll introduce, this is something that city staff has been engaging with MDOT on, and I believe perhaps with a few of you, but one of the things that's come up during the design process is that in order to achieve some of the things that the city was asked to advocate to MDOT for, or at least achieve them in the fullest sense of the vision, the street might sit better under city control than state control. Turnback is the term used for that. You see the definition there. Some of you are maybe really familiar, but all of you should be at least somewhat familiar with the change to Muskegon and Webster that happened a number of years ago. Those used to be a part of the state trunk line system. The city took those back. And I think we can all agree that since we've done that, those streets fit much better in the downtown character. So MDOT, in this case, would rebuild the road and turn it over to the city at the end of that process under an agreement. We continue to receive funding for the road, but we gain additional control over that street, including, as I mentioned, a little bit more control over the current design. This is something we're just introducing at this time. It is an early winter 25 decision timeframe. The design has to progress a little bit further before the agreement can be finalized that would, I guess, cover all of those things, so. Here's my ending discussion slide, and just for context, if you visit Grand Rapids occasionally, you'll recognize this intersection, probably due to the big mural. There's also a big church called Saint Mark's there to the left. This is Division and Pearl. This was part of a turnback that the City of Grand Rapids did to MDOT some number of years ago. And it is a three-lane section of road, and that in 2022 was carrying 16,400. Just an example to show that, you know, three-lane sections in an urban city can carry quite a bit of traffic and it can be a pleasant place to walk and enjoy. Welcome. Any thoughts, questions, and discussion? And again, Mark's here to back me up.
Thank you, Director Vanderheide. Let's start with questions first for Director Vanderheide or MDOT. So question, Commissioner Kilgo?
Yes. Thank you. So in your presentation, it said that additional MDOT engagement meetings in January and over the summer of next year will happen. I travel this road. My house is right off of a part of this section of Apple Avenue, so I see this road every day. And from what you described, from down here, downtown, the end of Apple to Wood Street, the two-lane proposal, I don't have a huge problem with. From Wood Street all the way to Roberts Street, the three-lane proposal? I just, I guess, have questions about two-lane down here from Wood to downtown, downtown, emergency vehicle, if it's only two lanes? Where can cars pull over to unless there's like additional roadway where there's parking, where cars could get out of the way? And then the Woods, the Wood Street to Roberts Street, have we considered anything else like Wood Street to Getty Street? Because I see a lot of traffic go from the commercial area, the highway area to Getty and then turn north or south on Getty as opposed to continue traveling into the city. So I guess I'll start with that first question. Have we considered any other sections to do, or do we think that MDOT will move forward with what's on the screen in front of us right now?
Well, Mark might be able to answer that last little bit, but I can say that we did, in meetings that we have with them, are they weekly or every other week? I can't recall right now, or every other week, but anyway. We did talk about that piece from Getty to Roberts and whether that warranted a different look. Really, in the end, what I think the project team sort of coalesced around is that there is very little difference in the number of vehicles, right? Like I said, it depends where you take the traffic count specifically, but we're talking 10,000 to 13,000 vehicles, you know, in both sides of Getty. Also, really, the only the only other sections that would make sense in that area are a four-lane or five-lane section, a four-lane being what it is today. Really, the the goal of increasing safety and reducing the speeds through the corridor really run very counter to leaving a four-lane section in there. It's it's from a traffic engineering perspective, it's just a lot of pavement and a lot of lanes, and it's a big part of the reason why folks are going 45 in a 30.
And have we thought about, do these designs take into consideration people who live in the Steel Neighborhood and the Sheldon Park Neighborhoods getting out of the neighborhoods onto Apple Avenue and making a left? No matter where you're at, north side, south side of Apple, making a right is usually not a problem, but sometimes at my intersection, making a left onto Apple Avenue in the current state that the road is in, it seems like there's a lot of traffic because sometimes making a left, you have to wait a while to make a left out from my neighborhood onto Apple Avenue. So will these lane proposals take into consideration people getting out of their neighborhoods?
They do in the sense that there's one of the benefits, one of the big benefits to our, the way our city's laid out is the grid, and I talked about that downtown, but it exists throughout. So, you know, first of all, there's the opportunity to go to Wood, Getty, Creston, you know, some of those other streets that would provide an easier left turn than would perhaps just trying to get out of the neighborhood, right? But also, I think, although we would never advocate such, you know, I have seen folks use the center turn lane, help them turn left onto a busy street, have even done it myself. It's not something we would encourage, but it does help in certain situations. And I think, given the other benefits that a section like that provides, you know, staff is comfortable proceeding with the three-lane section.
And then
Just before a follow-up, I think Mr. Manager, you had something to weigh in?
Yeah, Director Vanderheide, could you maybe talk a little bit about, logistically, on left-hand turns, crossing two lanes of traffic versus one lane in a left-hand turn lane and kinda how that functions differently from the two lanes in each direction that we have right now? I think that kinda might get to the core of what Commissioner Kilgo was asking about.
Not exactly sure what you're teeing me up for there, but you know, the same number of cars, unless you're comfortable turning at a time when there's one available open lane, you know, the same number of vehicles and therefore the same number of gaps would still exist under the new section. That's what you're getting at.
And but then with a little less to take into consideration, you have to deal with two lanes of traffic with the shifting gap. There would be one lane and for what you're turning into.
Sure. Putting everybody in one lane makes it easier to identify the gaps.
So I regularly attend both the Steel Neighborhood Association meetings and the Sheldon Park Neighborhood Association meetings in both sides. So one neighborhood's north of Apple, Steel, south of Apple, Sheldon Park. In both neighborhood associations, we already have concerns about people speeding through the neighborhoods, especially Amity Avenue. The middle school's no longer being used. There are proposals on what's gonna happen there, but it's a it's a drag strip at times, right? So has the city thought about? So if I divert and say I'm not gonna go up one of the side streets, Stevens or Roberts, to go to Apple Avenue, I'm gonna go all the way to Getty or go all the way to Creston where there's a stoplight. Has the city considered things to slow people down if they are now using the grid system part of the neighborhood streets?
Not specifically as part of this design, I'll say, but I think what I would say are two things. One, we certainly can look at those things and actually Traffic Committee is considering some of the data on Allen to the north with that specific concern in mind right now. It's on based on some of the feedback from the residents in that area. But I would also say that I think allowing the speeding situation to continue on Apple in order to hopefully avoid a similar situation in the neighborhoods. I think we can, I think there's ways we can fix both rather than accept one or the other.
Yeah, and one of the ways is leaving Apple Avenue like it is up until a certain point. I love the redesign downtown. Hey, people are coming in, they're seeing our beautiful city. Us having more green space east, west of Wood Street. So where you don't have as many residential places, but because people have houses on Apple Avenue, there is green space on Apple Avenue right now with people's yards and us having, we can't do anything about the residential houses that we currently have on Apple Avenue. Because I definitely think that those people that live right on Apple Avenue with one lane are also going to have a little bit harder time getting out of their, in and out of their driveway, so. I like the lane proposal changes just a little bit further west than what this is showing right now, so. Hopefully with what it says, with more discussion to be had, that we can do that, but I just don't know what this proposal that will, that we're gonna be voting on tomorrow will have. It said, one moment. It said. Yeah, there it is. The current lane configuration of Apple Avenue encourages speeds well above the posted 30 mile an hour speed limit. I myself don't want people to speed. You know, there's speed limits for a reason. It keeps people safe, but I also don't I don't see chief in here to talk about what our police force is doing about enforcing speed limits. I know that if we had a, you know, if we, if our police department had set up an area where they pull people over who are speeding and it happens, you know, so often, people are gonna be like, no, the police are on Apple Avenue. I'm not gonna speed on Apple Avenue. Especially the people that live in the area. And then the second part, MDOT has proposed to reduce the number of lanes in Apple Avenue in some sections. It does say some sections and it doesn't say all, so I'm comfortable with that, us changing it in some sections. I just believe that we should consider what sections those are.
I'll, I'll say that the, that language was crafted intentionally for two reasons. One, you know, the design and the evaluation of that lane reduction is not complete. This is, this resolution is one thing that MDOT needs in order to continue evaluating it, right? So this may be where things are at this moment in time, but as you suggest, you know, based on future feedback or future, you know, engineering design principles, for some reason or another, what we've discussed tonight doesn't work when we get further into the details, right? But this resolution still broadly supports the initiative. And also, you know, as you said, And also, you know, as you said, um, if if that comes to pass and it doesn't look just like this. Uh, this resolution still supports uh the goals that we're trying to achieve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgo. Uh, any other questions right now for Director Vanderhyde? Commissioner Coach.
I'm gonna keep it fairly brief. Um. You were talking about a turn back of the road. I have a question on that, um, if that occurs, is the maintenance and the cost of the maintenance uh on the city?
Yes, um, the city would begin to receive uh money for Apple Avenue. We currently receive some money for Apple Avenue. Um, I was just talking with Mark before the meeting and the amount that we would get in a turn back is somewhat open to. It's legal interpretation right now. It's um, it's in the, it's in a court case essentially. Uh, but the way, the way that um it worked under our previous turn back. Was the city continued to receive the same amount of money uh that we did and M dot was in control of the road. We did take on maintenance of it, but we were being reimbursed for that maintenance um when it was an M dot road. We are no longer being reimbursed for that maintenance now that Muskegon and Webster are city roads, however. Control we gained over the way that that road was operated and has been designed. Versus how it operates now, you know, I think we as staff and I know the neighbors in that neighborhood would say was well worth it.
And um you had discussed that uh there's been a change that you need to present to M dot. How how much of a change are we seeing from the original plan that was proposed to M dot?
Um, referring to funding yet, or could you clarify that one for me?
Referring to um the design.
Um, I I confess I'm not totally sure uh what you're asking there, but the design is not set. It's um, you know, effectively at the preliminary design stage, which is what our our technical engineers would call it. Basically enough work has been done to let us know that we think this will work. But as the old adage goes, right, the devil's in the details and as we work through all the specifics of the design. There could very well be things that come up that prevent this particular, you know, setup from being implemented. And M dot and the city would work together to work through those issues.
And then if the turn back is not um something that is supported, is. Is the plan to still go ahead with the changed Apple Avenue?
Staff would continue to advocate for it, yes. Um, without that turn back, some of the um rules that M dot is subject to. Um, would would remain in effect and might run counter to the very uh things that we've been asked to advocate for. So the turn back is a way for us to. I don't wanna say let M dot huff the hook, but you know, partner together in a way that lets uh some of the design standards. Look more like a city street instead of a trunk line highway. So we would still do the best we could, you know, if the turn back did not proceed. But it might not look, uh, it might not turn out quite as we're looking for if the turn back.
Thank you.
Thank Commissioner Coach. Commissioner German.
Uh, yes, thank you, man. Thank you, Director Vanderhyde. Um, for the presentation, um, some of my questions I had have been answered, but I did have some concerns. Um, you had kind of explained about the transitioning from the three way, I mean, the three lane into the um two lane. Um, and if you can just kind of briefly go back when that starts, um, from Muskegon. Uh, Avenue on up to about Getty. And the reason for my question is um because I do know there's a school there. Um, the Maritime Academy, which used to be the Angel School, and I do see a lot of um traffic go through there that's speeding. And that was a school I attended also and witnessed a classmate of mine is being hit by a vehicle. Unfortunately, and um thank God she was okay, but it was very serious. So I still have that concern of traffic, you know, speeding within that area and I could see and visualize the um. Two lane to slow that traffic down, but as we get further out and you mentioned. Transitioning into the three lane, um, coming back, I would say that'd be. Um, west towards uh Muskegon, I guess. Um, would it be feasible to have the three lane probably open up? Uh, maybe just say for instance at Sanford, since traffic gets kind of heavy going to the downtown. Instead of all of the uh, uh, instead of the two lane. I mean, what what is your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think the the three lane section versus the two. They carry the same number of vehicles, you know, in the same direction, right? So the two lane section um has one eastbound lane and one westbound lane. The three lane section has the same, one eastbound and one westbound. The only thing it adds is that center turn lane, which allows turning vehicles to get out of the way of the through vehicles. Effectively lets traffic continue to flow instead of be stopped by uh the vehicles. In the two lane section, when it's when it's downtown, you know, in that downtown street grid. Almost all of the turns are happening at the intersections. Sanford, at Peck, at at Jefferson, et cetera. So the need for that center turn lane is less. We also see a lot less vehicles in that section. In the the section we're recommending, the three lane, starting out near Wood. You know, we s- we see kind of a different traffic pattern, similar to how the tr- the street changes, so does the traffic pattern, right? Many of those folks are accessing those houses and the neighborhoods that are fed uh in that area. And so many more vehicles are turning left in particular, which is the troublesome movement. And so that's the main reason for recommending the three se- the three lane section versus the two.
At the Wood Street area.
Beginning at Wood and going east, yeah, when when the neighborhoods um really sort of crowd onto Apple. And and the knee, you know, a lot of the traffic on Apple is there to access homes rather than businesses and and other organizations like downtown.
And that was a concern also, uh residents getting out in and out of their uh driveways. Um, heavy traffic possibly at certain peak hours or anything like that, so, okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank Commissioner German. Uh, I do have a question to piggyback on that, but um. I'm gonna defer to Commissioner Gorman or Vice Minister Sankler if you have any uh initial questions right now. Do you have any initial questions right now? Okay, uh, to piggyback on uh with regard to that section from Wood Street to Muskegon Avenue. What would be the trade, let's say we instead of doing the two lanes as proposed here, we did keep a turning lane, so it's three lanes, what would be the trade off?
Uh, the main trade offs are probably a little bit of increased speed. Folks tend to drive at the speed they're most comfortable at. Um, certainly enforcement is one factor, but studies have shown that actually the way the street is designed, the width of the street. How sort of hemmed in they feel um has the biggest effect on how fast people drive. So by adding that extra piece of pavement, um, we'd probably encourage a few folks to go a little faster. Um, we'd also increase the pedestrian crosswalk lengths, so if you're walking across Apple, say to get to the Justice Center or whatever it might be. Uh, that's an additional twelve feet or so that you have to cross. Uh, adds time to um that pedestrians movement, which impacts traffic. But also um might discourage uh certain pedestrians from feeling comfortable crossing that longer distance. Would say those are probably the two main impacts they would be. Other than the additional maintenance that either M dot or the city would sign up for, I would say the pedestrian safety and the speeds.
What what would be the uh impact or trade off with regard to, it's let, let's say you, the the design with two lanes? And what you're able to do with the freed up space, what would be the impact and trade off if you did have a center turning lane in terms of? Uh, what happens to that freed up space, like what is being lost um in terms of how you were gonna use that freed up space? By including a third turning lane, a third lane for a turning lane.
Sure, yeah, good question. Um, so I would say uh some of the things we've discussed are that in the two lane section, it does provide the ability to have space for parking. So if the Justice Center or, you know, some other use or future use along Apple uh warranted parking. Um, the two lane section would allow for that, the three lane section could allow for that, but it would remove most of the green space, you know, that we are capturing. You'd effectively be at a four lane section again. Some of the other, you know, specific things we've mentioned, you know, the transit shelter that's shown there might be more difficult uh to fit things like that in there. Um, I think we could still get the the pedestrian facility on that south side, I think that would still fit. Um, but again, uh probably the biggest loss would be the ability to green up that corridor.
Okay. With with what you're envisioning with two lanes between Wood and Muskegon Avenue, does that include, I know that you you're not, two lanes, you're not talking about having continuous. Central lane for turning, but would that include any at intersections or, you know? Let's say, you know, the Baker Campus, well, it's not Baker Campus anymore, nor is it gonna be the county, uh, but it's gonna be redeveloped at some point, it's considerable amount of property. Um, there's talk of prospect of putting a lot of housing in there, so let's say there's gonna be a major entrance to there. Like, is it contemplating having a uh dedicated uh turning lane at certain intersections, even though it's not a continuous turning lane?
I would say that's one of the things M dot is still working through in the design. Um, I've seen versions that have turn lanes at a couple of the intersections, most particularly the Peck Terrace intersection. Uh, but the traffic study uh that we started this process with uh doesn't really indicate the need for that. And so, you know, if there is a a change or a large, you know, um. Use change on the horizon, there'd certainly be room for such a thing, and if it were, you know. Known to the extent that we wanted to accommodate it now, it would definitely allow for that. Uh, but it, as things sit today, um, it they don't appear to be necessary.
Okay, um. That is one section, um, hence my questioning, that does give me pause of um going down to two lanes. I'm not having a a turning lane, um, or even de- designated uh dedicated. Turn offs at at key intersections, um, because I could just see that easily getting backed up. Um, if you're, you know, going westbound and you wanna turn left onto a road or, you know, onto an intersection or into a business or house or whatnot. Um, and you're waiting for traffic the other way to clear, and now you're backing up behind you, um, everyone else trying to go westbound or, you know, vice versa. Um, and so I could just see potential for things getting backed up and congested um right there. And so um as, and that section is gonna get more and more developed, whether we're talking about uh the north side of Apple near near Benson's where there's new. Ha- housing development going in or, you know, south side where the former county, um, soon to be former county um operations there. That being redeveloped, and so I see prospect of a lot more uh activity potentially um happening right there in the immediate vicinity. And um interfacing with that section of Apple Avenue, so that's why, does give me a little bit of pause, um, not having. A continuous center turn lane or a key dedicated turn offs, um. Now.
If I, if I could, just real quick.
Uh.
I would like to to say, I think I've said this before, but um we did effectively do a. Uh, I shuddered to use the word pilot, but we did uh last summer, um, because both Terrace and Peck, or excuse me, Sanford were being worked on. And the intersections, both of them had uh one lane of Apple closed. So for almost the entire summer of twenty twenty-three, that section was functioning at the Peck and Terrace intersection, the busiest one there. With just two lanes in each direction. Not sure anybody even noticed.
So, between Peck and Terrace, that one block you're talking about?
That that intersection, Peck and Ter- Peck and Terrace are essentially the same, they change names across Apple.
Oh, yeah, they do, yeah, okay, so what 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 stretch you're talking about then?
That right there, that intersection was two lanes.
That, okay, not like, okay, I was talking like between multiple intersections, so.
Well, from from Sanford to Peck effectively, but a little bit past it and and that. That block from Sanford to Peck on Apple was two lanes, one in each direction for most of the summer of twenty-three.
Okay, um. What would be the similar question, trade offs? Um, if we heard from Commissioner Kog is some questioning, um. And intimating some concern as well with the prospect of not maintaining five lane road configuration east of Getty Street instead of that, you know, starting at east of a. Uh, Roberts, so. If we were to continue five lane road configuration east of Getty Street, what would be the trade offs? Like versus versus what you're envisioning now with the narrowing versus if if it were maintained?
Yeah, I think um while the the pedestrian concern is a little bit uh less. You know, we see fewer pedestrians uh crossing Apple there, although still some. Uh, the speed would certainly still be the the largest impact, I would think. A five lane wide section is a very wide road. Um, most of them, you know, have speed limits of forty, even fifty miles. Cause that's what folks tend to drive on.
Yo, people quickly accelerate to fifty right there.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and then, of course, we'd lose a good chunk of the green space um that we're hoping to recapture.
The ten foot wide non-motorized path that you're envisioning on the south side of Apple Avenue. Um, you, I think you mentioned earlier, but refresh my memory, what, from where to where?
So that is another thing, I'm glad you mentioned that, that would probably have to go if we kept that five lane section any further west than Roberts. Essentially, the five lane section pushes that non-motorized facility out.
It would stop at Getty.
That's the reason it, under this scheme, it goes all the way to Roberts where those five lanes start. But if we were to carry that section into Getty, we would lose that uh almost certainly east of Getty.
Okay, and we are still in progress of evaluation, are the studies still in progress of um evaluating reconfiguring Getty Street? Inclusive of potentially adding a bike lane or non-motorized route um north and south of Getty.
We we commissioned a study on that and we have it.
Oh, it's done?
The study is done, um, because it involves uh several community partners. We're still uh working through the details of the recommendations and and how how that might be implemented.
Yeah, whether whether, how how good of the prospects are of of getting that done, okay. Um, cause I see that as a more natural. Uh, for the non-motorized trail, a more natural connector versus Roberts, which isn't a straight north and south, it kind of meanders a little bit. Um, throughout the the Sheldon Park and Oakview neighborhoods, um, so I could see the Gettys being more of a direct um north-south route.
Again, again, though, the the only reason we're stopping at Roberts right now is because we don't have the room to go any further. And the hope would be, or the plan frankly, is that when the Sherman Street Bridge uh is rebuilt. It would include a non-motorized component, much safer than the two foot wide curbs or whatever uh are out there today. And it would cross thirty-one and connect to some similar future component in the township.
Just a couple more questions and I'm gonna go to follow up uh questions. With regard to the prospect of turn back for Apple Avenue, you said you mentioned or the slides mentioned an early winter twenty twenty-five decision. Um, so I understand, cause you said that it would be built and then handed over after being built, so a decision we've made is expected in winter twenty twenty-five, but actual handover would not. Happen until subsequent um of the project being done, am I understanding that correctly?
That's my understanding, this is definitely more Mark's area of expertise than mine, but that's my understanding is that um. The design has to reach a certain point before the agreement can be developed in enough detail and they expect that'll be winter of twenty-five. But then you're right, the actual turn back would not occur until the.
Okay, and then my final question for now is, um, speaking of the process. Um, if we have, you mentioned this is the preliminary design that we have right now. Um, and there's talk of additional engagement, so, but wh- what's the ensuing process in terms of engaging or refining the design? And when could we expect a finalized, like here is the finalized design that we anticipate uh constructing? If you could introduce yourself kindly, please.
Of course, uh, Mark Frederickson with M dot um Muskegon Office. So our, we're currently about fifty percent design, so that's where we've kind of roughed in, you know, how many lanes, those type of things. So that's where we're to this point where we're asking for the resolution to to support that number of lanes being different than what's out there today. So that's that's the ask, um, you know, as Dan stated for today. Going forward, uh, we'd like to be at close to seventy percent here by the end of the year, uh, January first, and then that is kind of our milestone. Uh, we call it a plan review process where we engage um with all the the various entities to ensure that we've got a good. to ensure that we've got a good concept going here. You know, we're going in the right direction, we're getting close to the finish line. As part of that, we'll have a public engagement period. It would happen around that same time. Right now, we're envisioning January, maybe it'd be February, depending just how things hit here once we get to that point. But that would be the opportunity to see a lot more of this detail you're asking for. You know, where, where do the lanes stop-start? How do they do that? Where are the turn lane pockets? A lot of that stuff, so it's coming and we'll get in place on the plans here in the next few months. And that'll be, again, in conjunction with meeting with Dan on a regular basis, making sure that what the city's looking for is what we're providing. That's the whole goal of this project. So that, that's our seventy percent milestone, still got a fair amount of work to do. Going back to the turn back process, so some of that seventy percent, as Dan alluded to earlier, the state has certain design requirements and we have to meet in order for this to be called trunk line and for MDOT to own and operate it. If it's no longer going to be trunk line and it's going to be city, we've got more flexibility on those design elements. But that, that timing of that, we need to, MDOT needs to be ensured that it is going to be a turn back and go through that process so that we don't get to a hundred percent design and then something changes and now we've got to go back and redo the design. We jeopardize the funds and the project altogether. So that's the part where we're looking for winter coming up here and then, you know, six months out roughly, that we would like to have that turn back resolution and actually get the agreement in place and have that signed by the city. That, that locks us into what we know we need to meet for our design standards as we proceed toward finalizing design. So that would happen, final design would be May-June type timeframe is what we're looking at. And then we would, again, have a public engagement at that time to show you, hey, here's, here's the final design that we worked through, took the feedback in, in January. You know, certainly there's, as, you know, there's been a ton of conversation today talking about, there's give and take, there's, you know, pros and cons to this stuff. Everything that, you know, in order to get this, you got to give up that and vice versa. There's always things that are on odds, whether it's safety, whether it's speeds, whether it's, you know, delay out there. I mean, delay in itself isn't necessarily bad from an engineering and design. I understand it can be difficult to sit here and say that. And I know we've all experienced it at different times around the city as we travel. And there's times you got to wait a little bit longer, get through a cycle or an intersection or, you know, the big event just let out, whatever it may be. But that delay also, it slows speeds down, it allows for some other things to happen safely. So there is a component there that is a feature, not a bug, I'll say. You know, there's a reason and a method for the madness on that. But yes, anyway, sorry, back on the schedule. So summer next year, we would be looking for a final public meeting. We would go to letting advertising for the project to get a contractor on board in the fall of next year, roughly a year from today. And then we would be ready to implement and build the project in twenty-six.
Okay, thank you. So we, separate from this, we anticipate a turn back agreement coming to the commission by year end of twenty twenty-four.
So I would expect, I mean, the turn back, we could certainly have something drafted up as soon as you would like. That would be fairly easy for us to draft up, review what that would entail. It's a fairly straightforward and R N process for that. We would be looking for actual agreements signed by the city by roughly March or April of next year.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Koga, follow up.
Thank you. So I saw one of your designs with the website that you said can be played around with a bus, and it made me think about us relooking, we're talking about, or we have a coalition to kind of change our bus line system. The bus is still going to come down Apple Avenue to take people to downtown and the Hall of Justice and other things like that. And buses make stops. And if it's only two lanes, it did give me thoughts that that will cause some backups. And so I just thought about that. If there were changes made at Apple Avenue and Getty, it's currently five lanes. Let's just take the westbound lane, it's three lanes. The far right, you can turn right or go through. Second one, you can go through, and the third one is the left-hand turn lane. If it went from five to three lanes right there, the right-hand turn lane could be right turn only. The straight lane would turn into that one lane that's going to be the three lane, and the left-hand turn lane would be left-hand turn. How would you, it would be a merge if we started it at Roberts? Because prior to Roberts, it's five lanes, and then you'd have one of those merge signs. To me, that's not as safe as it is at a stopped light, where it's that right-hand turn is a right-hand turn only lane. And then, two, two last questions. One is, I'm not, I don't, I see the designs and I see the pictures, but I don't know what, are we trying to have a ten foot sidewalk or walkway from Muskegon Avenue all the way to Roberts Avenue?
That is, you know, one of the things that reducing the number of lanes and the width of the street would allow, yes.
Okay. And then, I don't want this to be like what Commissioner Koga wants. I would like us to make sure that we have specific public engagement with Sheldon Park, Oakview, Steel Neighborhood, those neighborhoods and those people that live, and people in Commissioner German's ward in War Two is west of, west of Getty is War Two. I want us to have specific conversations with the people that live just north and south of Apple Avenue. Yes, it's going to be, while we're doing construction, it's, construction is construction. We know in Michigan, we have summer construction and it's a pain in the butt. But when those streets are done, we're all happy, right? And that's cool. But as far as the redesign part of it, I want us to make sure that we're having specific, not just, hey, the city of Muskegon has a public engagement and it's on our website, but us doing a good job of contacting those neighborhood associations. Deborah, I know you're going to hook me up. With us contacting specifically so we can get the word out to the people that live, so we can hear from them on what they want also. Because I have a feeling from some of the constituents that I've talked to, at least until Getty, they would not like any changes. And I know that we've had traffic studies done before and we've deviated from them because that's what the city of Muskegon wants, i.e. Shoreline Drive. We had a traffic study done that said, oh, do this to it. And we didn't want to do that to it and we're okay with how it is right now. I understand and I'm, I'm very thankful that we're doing our due diligence with the traffic studies. I just want us to make sure that we do a little bit more engagement and a better job of engaging our citizens who live really close north and south of Apple Avenue.
Happy to commit to going to a neighborhood association meeting for both of those groups and sitting down and talking with those folks. Can't promise Mark will be there, but I, I can definitely do that.
Can Director Van Hyde or perhaps Deborah, or Mr. Manager, someone elaborate? Because last year, there was focused and intentional outreach to various different neighborhood associations, businesses, property owners and along Apple Avenue. Like, can someone expound on that focused outreach last year, separate in addition to the, hey, we're having an engagement downtown come to us?
Yeah. If I say anything wrong, Deborah just holler or whatever. But members of those neighborhood associations were invited to specifically participate in sessions where we sat around tables in this room and in groups discussed, you know, what they'd like Apple Avenue to look like. It was not the entire neighborhood association board, right? It was, I'm not sure the exact number that we had from each neighborhood, but I know that members of the neighborhood association board were invited to participate and residents who live in those neighborhoods were invited to participate specifically.
So letters were shared with houses along Apple Avenue, businesses along Apple Avenue, nonprofits, I think I remember, someone from Goodwill there, someone from Benson's and other businesses. So everyone was, had been contacted and invited to engage before we had the larger, wider engagement at Lighten Park.
Yep. And Lowell Kirksey is one that stands out in my mind as one of the residents who lives in that area and was there. Well, there were several others, so.
Okay. Thank you for that background. Do you have additional follow up, Commissioner Koga? Okay. Any other thoughts or questions, Commissioners, at this time? Nope, all right. Well, this resolution is on our agenda for tomorrow. Just something to keep in mind is that we are not necessarily endorsing any specific design. We are looking, being asked to approve a resolution saying we support Apple Avenue being reconfigured with the potential for lane reductions or reconfigurations at different sections along Apple Avenue and that there will be additional public engagements to help guide and inform what is to come. And so there will be more to come. And this is just basically giving our formal declaration of support to continue this process and take a serious look at reconfiguring Apple Avenue. Thank you much, Director Vander Hyde.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the fiscal year 2023 CAPER. That's Consolidated Action Plan. I'm going to wait for you to come up here, Director Carson. And I do not remember the CAPER acronym. Know it's in my packet, though.
Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation.
There we go. Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report.
All right, hello. My name is Sharonda Carson. I am the Director of Community and Neighborhood Services. And I am here today to present the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for fiscal year 2023. So our executive summary is the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAPER, is an important and necessary communication tool between the City of Muskegon, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and the public. Its purpose is to inform and report on the progress the cities of Muskegon Community and Neighborhood Services Department has made toward the goals set forth in our 2021 through 2026 Consolidated Action Plan and its respective action plan. So this year, our resources that were made available by CDBG and Home are reflected above. You can see that there was an amount expended this year in CDBG of almost a million dollars. Home was a hundred, a hundred and nine thousand, give or take. So some of our goals that we supported this year was to utilize funding for home repairs, for side improvements, park improvements, create new homeowners through home buyer assistance and rehabilitation of homes to create affordable housing for the community. Some of those services included youth programs, housing ramps, the fire station bond, and home repairs. So we had a total investment in home repairs of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There was forty-six homes repaired. Yeah, kids' power produce, there's eight thousand there, and some youth services that included the Muskegon Public Schools credit recovery and also internships. There was a total of five hundred and eighty-seven youth served. And then there was the Love Inc. housing ramps. There is two ramps installed with a total of eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two and seventy-six spent. So goals and outcomes for our home funds. We spent a hundred and ninety thousand, a hundred and nine thousand in home investments for home buyers assistance, rehab and purchase of Wood Street property, which is going to be a property that we're going to rehab and market to low income families who would like to be homeowners. And then there's also the fifty thousand dollars set aside for administration. Demographics, we served fourteen percent white, forty-five percent black or African American, and there was forty-one percent other. The demographics reflect seven out of ten families received services through our CDBG and home funds. So at the beginning of the year, we had a balance of three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for program income. We received sixteen thousand, nine fifty-nine, thirty-eight, and that's a typo, it says twenty-two for fiscal year twenty-two, that should say twenty-three. The amount we spent was fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-one. And the balance on hand at the end of the reporting period is three hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fourteen and fifty-six cents. Back up. I did want to mention that with our home funds, we were able to rehab a home for, well, we have two units that were made available for low income families who were either experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. That is going to generate program income. That fund, those funds will be reinvested into that property. And that property is on Isabella. So that's one highlight that I wanted to make because it's something different that we haven't done in a while, and it's adding to our contribution of fighting against homelessness. So I just would like to say thank you, guys, for the opportunities to serve. And I would like to invite anybody who would like to share any comments, questions or concerns to contact us. You can contact us via phone, mail, website, or you can stop into the office and speak to someone directly. And now, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Director Carson.
Thank you.
Commissioners, questions? Thoughts to share? Commissioner German?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Carson, for the presentation. Couple of questions. When it comes to service for residents, and you broke down the demographics there. I reside over Ward Two, and I have a pretty diverse ward. And I've spoken to, just most recently, to residents and they've sent applications in for home repairs and been denied. And they find it very difficult to get services, additional services. Also, when it comes to some of the contractors that's providing these services, I just reported something to the city manager a couple of weeks ago. Senior citizens had a roof done, and two weeks ago, due to the continuous rain, the roof was leaking. So I have concerns when, with some of the services being provided by some of these contractors, and are we holding them responsible or discontinuing to have service with them? And I don't even know if you know anything about that or not. I just thought I would bring that to your attention. But the criteria for having additional service, because a lot of these residents are senior citizens, and we have all these. and we have all these new homes going up in the neighborhood, which is good for people that can afford them, but some of them can't. Some of these residents can't afford them. Seventy years, eighty years plus paying taxes, and there's a cap or a limit on what they can have done to their homes. So I guess my question would be, with the funding coming in, how can we assist to make sure that some of these homes are brought up to code or get additional funding for some of these residents, particularly the ones like in their eighties and nineties?
Okay, so to speak to that, we are, we are implementing a new process as of October one, where there's one home repair application, and the staff has been charged with looking at the whole house and taking a whole-house approach. So they are, they are using different tools to document what they find when they go out to the houses. And what that would allow us to do internally is to utilize different avenues to assist if there's an opportunity to do so. So that means that there may be some leveraging of different dollars to ensure that this homeowner is getting provided the best service. Because some of those shortfalls I've noticed is because the resident may come in and say, for instance, their roof is leaking, and they may need another service, but they, they don't know. They're just saying that's the most pressing thing. And so our staff goes in and they just look at the roof. They're not looking at anything else. So we wanna take a different approach to see if we can help combat some of those issues.
Okay, I, I like that approach because, again, some of the older homes, they have more problems and issues. Like for instance, this residence roof, and then there's been some other things that go on where if they do get accepted or awarded the services, they can't apply or reject it because they just reached that threshold. And if you can just kinda touch a little bit, what, right now, what is the limit that most of these residents could top out at when they get services? Because some of them exceed what the city will allow.
So it just depends on what program that they're going through. And like I said, in the past, if they were going through CDBG and they received a home repair, there's a cap of about fifteen thousand dollars. And typically, sometimes we have to walk away from projects if they're too extensive, or we do, we still have to work within our guidelines. And for instance, if there's aluminum siding, they don't qualify for the siding program. So we have to make sure that we're respecting our guidelines as well when we're going out to the homes and assessing them to see what we can do. We don't like to turn away clients. We don't like to say that a project is too big for us, but there are some times where we utilize all of our resources and it's just, if we were to utilize those resources, that is still not gonna be enough to get them in a position where it's favorable for them, so to speak. And they still have a lot more concerns, and we don't wanna put any hardship on the family. So we have to take all those things into account.
Yeah, and thank you. One last thing, Mayor. And, and I'm glad you addressed it because one of the concerns that I have because when there is hardship and they can't afford to take out a loan for home repairs, and they turn to the city to, to get these services, and then they don't qualify or reject it, and then there's issues, and then they get, you know, citations or for, you know, homes to be repaired, and they end up just about losing their homes. And that's a huge concern because now we're looking at a situation where the city have these funds, but the tenant, I mean, the resident or the citizen, it's hard for them to get help. And now you have another resident that's actually on the edge of being homeless. So I'm just trying to look at ways, and I like the holistic approach that you're talking about when you're going into the homes, to look at the whole house to see if those services can be provided to kind of fix those things. With this new approach, is there a dollar amount or a limit that they have capped on that? Or it's just, again, the different programs that you're talking about?
It really boils down to it being a case-by-case situation because, and I share your sentiments. We don't like to go into houses and say, oh man, we gotta turn this family away. But we've been into some situations where we come in with good intentions and we just dug ourselves into a hole. And now our resources are being depleted in this one house when we have several more families that needs assistance. And we do work closely with our SafeBuild Department as well. They refer, say they get families that may be on the verge of being a dangerous building. They come see us first, and they go out and give applications to the clients so that they know where the resources are. So we're doing everything that we can do to make sure that we can assist, we are assisting families at the end of the day. So.
Alright, well, thank you for that information. Yeah, we can't fix everything, but you know, we're here to try to help and hopefully provide those services for people and citizens that need them.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner German. And I also really appreciate the new approach where it's more holistic, holistic approach and doing a whole-house assessment. And then just wanna draw folks' attention to the section under Resources Investments, speaking specifically to leveraging, where as part of that, you know, whole-house assessment, you can see what issues there are aside from the most pressing one. And even if we do not have a program that can serve them or enough resources within our programs to serve them, you've called out some other resource partners, Healthy Homes Production Grant through HUD, the Medicaid chip-led payment grant through the state of Michigan, Senior Milage Grant through Muskegon County, and DT Energy Efficiency Grant. And of course, we also have like, North Star, what? Was it North Star? No. True North, yeah, True North. It didn't sound right, North Star. True North and, you know, Mid-Michigan Cap and other resource partners that we can refer people to and get them connected to so that we hopefully can piece together all these different supports and resources to, like Commissioner German said, fully serve them. Commissioner Kylgo.
Thank you. Can you jump back to your slide, the one that has goals and outcomes on it?
This one.
A couple of questions. The homebuyer assistance, is that our down payment assistance program?
Yes.
Okay. And the fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-one is a number that we gave out over last year, in 2023?
Yes.
On average, how much would you say per home that we give out for home down payment assistance?
That is kinda hard to answer because we just went through this, like, reworking of the program and redesigning it. So that number you see is reflective of maybe two or three families that receive the services. So it was as little as three thousand, and as much as twelve thousand dollars has been given out to those families.
When you say revamping, what kind of improvements have been made to that particular program?
We added an underwriting tool, and what that allows us to do is to take in a person's income and all their expenses and analyze what would be an appropriate amount that they should be paying for their monthly mortgage. It also allows us to look at all the fees associated with that buyer and appropriate the amount of assistance that they need.
Since making the changes to the program, have we seen more applicants this year, this fiscal year?
I would say we see a lot, we, we receive a lot of applications. We don't really have a lot of completion at the end, you know, where they are able to receive those funds. And I think it's more in line with the fact that a lot of buyers don't understand that they need to talk to us, and they need to talk to us frequently. They don't need to consider us at the end. They need to come to us, you know, when they're thinking about, they've got that approval to buy a house, they wanna come to us to make sure that they're in line to receive a down payment assistance. Because there's different quality criteria, like I said, the tool that we use, the underwriting tool. We also do a property standard checklist to make sure that the house is in good standard, that that family is not gonna experience a hardship or a burden in the first one to five years of owning that home. We ensure that the home is led safe as much as possible and those types of things. And so we wanna have time to be able to take that extra care to that, and this program really is for the buyer. So we are always on the buyer's side and trying to instruct them in an appropriate way as much as possible. So.
I, I hear from a lot of people in that industry, because I'm in that industry. So what you're saying is it would be in a buyer's best interest, as soon as they identify the home that they wanna purchase, to contact the city and get this process started?
Even sooner than that, when they get that a pre-approval that they can purchase a home, that's when they wanna come in and start talking to us. Because we, we don't wanna be the reason why you can't close. And it's been, it's come down to that a few times where we're, we're the last person you think of, and now we can't move as fast, or the finance department needs more time to process that check because they can't do it Johnny on the spot, you know? So it's just working together cohesively, you know, the lender getting us the documents that we need so that we can formulate what that final number is. I know another challenge is that we can't, we don't know that number upfront, and so we get a lot of pushback because they want us to tell them, what is the amount of assistance? We won't know that until we get the final disclosure, closing disclosure. So.
So just a, maybe a tidbit to help everyone, right? Help your department so that you're not getting crazy people calling you like, I gotta close tomorrow, but also help for buyers who are looking for some assistance because down payment does hinder quite a few people being able to achieve that homeownership, even when they have a pre-approval. They need some down payment assistance. Is there, on the city site or Connect Muskegon or anything like that, is there a place where people can go to read what they'll need for you all?
So, right now, we're working on that, like a frequently asked question that we can either both upload on, online and attach to an application because we do know that that can be stressful, and people just don't have the information or know where to look. So that is one thing that we're doing, and we're gonna get that out as soon as possible.
Or maybe even recording a video, and we find a landing page for it so that people can see that exactly what, not everybody's watching this, but a place where people can see, don't come to the city when you're set to close in three days and you need some down payment assistance. We need to be up, we need to be at the beginning of the process, like you just said. I want more people to know that because I've gotten calls, and I know you've gotten calls, where people are like, thinking that it's just, I filled out a piece of paper and I gave it to them and they didn't give it me, and they, they haven't read nothing. They haven't given you all the information that you need. They just think, because they did A, but they didn't do B, C, and D, that they're gonna get the down payment assistance. So maybe that's something to think about because I, I do think we could help more people with the down payment assistance piece because there are, you know, we're building homes with our infill program. There's lots of homes on the market, and we can help more people with that down payment piece. There's lots of pieces you need to buy a house, but with that down payment piece, I think it's a great program. I just want us to be able to educate our citizens a little bit better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kylgo. Commissioners, anything else to ask or add? Alright, thank you Director Carson. And just a reminder, people have until October, what?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth to share any feedback or otherwise get their questions addressed. I suppose they get their questions addressed after October fourteenth, but that's the deadline for receiving public input. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next up, opioid settlement funding and management agreement. And this has been led up by our manager's office. Is this our city manager or? Alright, so, I'm good sir. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner Pete Wills, Government Relations Director and Strategic Operations Director, which is a mouthful. I'm here just to spend a few minutes to talk about a fund source that we have received as part of the National Opioid Settlement that was completed in, or finalized in 2022. And so to date, we have about a hundred and seventy-one thousand that's been received out of a scheduled six hundred and five thousand dollars that we're supposed to receive between now and 2020-40. So we have tonight and then tomorrow night is a staff recommendation on perhaps how best to allocate those dollars. And we'll have some guests tomorrow evening from the county going forward. But what I did wanna spend a few minutes to talk about was, I have a number of documents up online that the public can consult with relative to a lot of sourced information through the Michigan Office of Attorney General, as well as the National Opioid Settlement link, where a number of great resources for the public to learn about how best to allocate these dollars. What I found was the Michigan Association of Counties, as opposed to your trade association, MML, had much more information and tools out there for municipalities to be able to, to use on how best to use the funds that they had received. So I really relied on the Michigan Association of Counties for, for much of that, that information. But in 2021, I don't really wanna read this to you, but a lot of it is somewhat semi-dense here. But in 2021, a twenty-six billion dollar national settlement was reached to resolve all opioid settlement litigation brought by a number of states and local units as related to three to around ten different pharmaceutical companies and vendors. And as part of that process, or terms of those settlements, eligible uses that local units and state governments could be able to use those funds for were for activities such as prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery. And so all those are, those are very broad terms, and as part of attachments that I have in the presentation, you can see that the eligible uses of those funds are broad. There are some limitations that, that are placed on entities that are receiving those funds. So states and local units are eligible to receive those, those dollars. There, there is an agreement that the state of Michigan has with local units on how those dollars are allocated to municipalities across the state. And it's based in part by a national allocation formula that takes into account opioid overdose fatalities, prevalence of opioid use disorder, and distribution of opioids in certain communities across the country. And so not all local units in Muskegon County are receiving those funds, and those that are are based on this particular formula that's been, been agreed. So to date, as I mentioned, since February 2023, we have received a little over a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars from six different settlement cases. And the dollars that, that we've received have been inconsistent. We started to receive those in February, in February 2023, August of 2023, November, and so the second set of payments came in the same schedule this year. So inconsistent dollar amounts and times of the year in order to stand up a particular city-based program. So that's why we explored other organizations that are working in this space that are potentially offering different grant programs going forward. So. I will say that Muskegon County, Aggleston Township, Fruitport Township, Muskegon Township, Muskegon Heights, Norton Shores, and the city of Muskegon are the, the entities in Muskegon County receiving funds, the largest of which is Muskegon County at almost eleven and a half million dollars. The, the main thrust behind how these dollars can be spent are, should be spent for opioid remediation. So care, treatment, other programs and expenditures that are, that address the misuse and abuse of opioid products, or that treat or mitigate opioid use, or other effects that are, that are part of this. Wanna mention that what we found through the Michigan Association of Counties Settlement Reporting Survey was that many communities across the state have yet to formally decide how best to use the dollars that they've received. So while we received ours early last year, it sounds like many counties, if not municipalities, have not stood up particular granting programs. While we received ours early last year, it sounds like many counties, if not municipalities, have not stood up particular granting programs. Be in a place where we're um, entering into arrangements that other. Haven't found other examples that are happening in other communities and counties across the state. So, um, as far as limitations on these, these funds, what we're finding is that cannot be. Combined or shouldn't be combined with general fund dollars. Um, there are limitations on uh, reporting. If dollars aren't spent in, in certain ways, then, then we would have to report to the federal government how those funds are spent. But commingling these dollars with city general funds create, I think, um, a little more complication and it's something that we don't. Really want to avoid. As it relates to sort of the, the city's social equity grant loan program, um, where I think there's a little bit more flexibility within that grant program. There's a little bit more, there are restrictions on these dollars, so as far as um. Going down that road and allocating the dollars in that, in that particular format, um, we have, we don't have that particular flexibility, so. Dollars that are spent on prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery are really those broad um, broad uses. So, wh- when I started this process in June and July this year, we knew that the United Way of the Lakeshore uh, works in this space. We knew that Muskegon County Public Health Department had an existing grant program that they're in year two. And so we had met with both of those entities to learn more about what, what they do and. Given the limited, limited dollars that we had, had received. So, back when I met with them in June and July, we had about a hundred and forty-ish thousand. And to stand up a program probably was going to be more complicated and, and, and um, I'm intensive and so we knew that. For example, Muskegon County was in this space and they're using the dollars in the same way. Felt like we could go down that road of, of exploring what both of those entities are, are working on. So. In, in my observations of the United Way, they had a very robust software tracking program as it relates to their community investment grant. Fund as well as just a general grant um, structure that, that they have here, so. Having sat with Muskegon County. They are in year two uh, of that, of that program and um. So far in year two, they have spent uh, six hundred thousand dollars or they've allocated six hundred thousand dollars. They hope to between twenty and twenty, twenty forty. They have a pass-through agreement that we're um. Get some water just one moment here. Through the Michigan Association of Counties, there is a, a pass-through agreement that exists that local units can use to allocate those dollars. And um, what we are hoping to do. Jump to the exhibit. Do we have exhibit A on the attachment?
It's page sixty-one of that page of the memo.
So I don't have the packet in here. Because we didn't put it online.
Tomorrow's packet, right? Uh, yeah, it should be in tomorrow's packet, um. You're talking about the allowable uses of funds and funding restrictions? Okay.
Having met with Muskegon County, um, they've got nine point five million dollars out of eleven and a half that they're scheduled to allocate towards. Uh, this opioid settlement. And so what, they have stood up a grant program of six hundred thousand dollars a year. For this particular purpose and so. What we want to do is um. Use this pass-through agreement in the same ways that the county is, is using. So these are very broad uses. Um, what we want to do is enter into this arrangement with the county. Uh, to have them spent in the same ways that the county is um, expected to use them as well and. Think I would, let me just jump to, I've got Candy Gibson from Fresh Coast Alliance who works in this space. Also have Kathy Moore tomorrow evening that can speak to more of the details on the grant program as well. Um, but maybe Candy can speak to. And shed a little bit more light and, and uh, on how we can use.
Good evening and welcome. If you'd kindly introduce yourself.
Good evening, I'm Candy Gibson. I'm a city of Muskegon resident, homeowner in the um, McLaughlin neighborhood. And I work at Fresh Coast Alliance. I'm their communications and development director. And so, yeah, we actually received one of the first rounds of the grants from the county. We actually, I'm a part of the, what was the opioid task force. And is now called something else and the name I cannot remember because it, it has recently changed. Um, and so we worked with the county to build out the program so that it does the granting within the county. And we were, Dana Nestle came to a meeting and asked us questions. Um, you guys need to know your county is at the forefront of this. I moved here from Wichita, Kansas, and I had somebody from Wichita get ahold of me and say, hey, we've heard about what's going on in Muskegon. And somebody says you moved there. And like, so this is, it is very unique what is happening. And that the dollars are getting in the hands of the people who are on the ground doing the work and not just staying at a municipal level. They're in the hands of our friends at LifeLine, they're in our hands of our friends at Trinity. And we're all working, there's multiple other ones also, but we're all working together. And so it's not just. Yes, we received a grant and our grant specifically, our funding for this last round was specifically for engaging faith communities. In all three, in three of the areas, in re- um, in prevention, moving our, so we do a. Um, program in some of the schools, we go in and we do a um, an assem- I don't have kids, sorry, it's been a long time since school. Assembly called Power of a Choice. We're doing that now at youth groups also. So they're talking about prevention in a church space or a mosque, or it doesn't have to just be a Christian space, any faith community. Um, that's one of the things we did. We created a faith and Narcan kit. To create space and training and opportunities for faith communities in this county of Muskegon. To have Narcan on the premise to begin to de-stigmatize those conversations with their congregants and members. Something else we're working on for this next round, if we get it, we find out next week, um, is. We want to do videos with local faith leaders to de-stigmatize opioids and the use and talking about recovery. And then some of the money also went to, we had, we have faith leaders breakfast quarterly to get them in our building to meet people. To have conversations and candid conversations for leadership around these topics. Because how do you ask questions you don't even know you have until you hear someone's story? Um, so those are some of the things that we've done this last. We applied for two grants this next round. One will be doing some in-reach in the, at Muskegon Correctional Facility, um, running an A, an NA group there. They've asked. That an NA group be run on the premises and we have relationships there, so we want to move forward with that. So it's one of the things that in the future we'll be doing with this next round is, is things that affect really the whole community. Not just men and women who currently are in active use or in recovery. It's prevention, it's talking to people, it's having Narcan at events where people are like, oh no, I would never need that. Well, you know, you don't know what you'll come across and we'd rather you not need it, but we'd rather you have it if you need it. It's something that we, we, we say at the office, it's, one of the most pro-life things your church can do is have Narcan in its building. And we really, these funds were, were vital to us creating space for our staff to make the kits. To get it in the hands of faith leaders and talk to them about it, not just hand it to them, but say, hey, here's how you use it, here's training. We have a sticker you can put on your door so people know this is a place that this is, it's okay to come in if you have a problem. And so we really want to continue to build that de-stigmatization in faith communities and the work. That the opioid task force did was fantastic and I was really honored to be a part of it as a new member to the community. Moving here two years ago and jumping in to that team and it was really, really amazing to see the collaboration. That Muskegon has and the resources we have and just getting them into the right hands. And expanding the knowledge of that team because you have, I mean, you have a lot of great resources here. For people in recovery and it's really beautiful to see the team come together monthly and then regularly outside of that also. Do you guys have questions that I might just happen to know more about?
Commissioners, any questions right now?
I know we at Fresh Coast love the idea of combining the funds because that's just a broader use of it within your commu- within the community.
Yeah, so I, the, just a quick um, addition to what has already been talked about. When staff started looking at our different options, as I've talked with the commissioners about, this is more for the folks at home. Uh, really, we narrowed it down to four different things we could do within the city. Um, and it was decided that really the most advantageous would be to get these dollars into organizations in the community that do this work. This is not work that we do in the community, there's folks that do it. And then when we started looking at how to get those dollars out as, as Director Wills was pointing out. Because the county has this robust grant program, it just made sense to do this. Uh, as opposed for us to trying to stand something up on our own, um, and uh, you know, slicing that pie even smaller, so.
And I can tell you, this year there has, there were seventeen people, seventeen organizations that applied for the funding through the county. And initially they were going to only fund ten, but it looks like they're gonna fund fourteen this round. Um, because three of which were not in Muskegon County at all. So, that's one of the stipulations is you have to be within the county, serving the people in the county. And also you have to have a history of doing this work. It wasn't like you could be a newcomer and just walk in, but if you have a history, even in like Holland and you want to. Branch out and come here, there's open to that if you have a history of historically doing this work. And so they put in some safeguard, so it's not people just seeing opioid dollars and running after them. So I really, I appreciated that that came up in the meetings, like, no, there needs to be a history of engagement with the, with the folks. Who are on the ground doing the work.
Sounds like a good approach uh, overall and framework to use these resources as efficiently as possible and. Effectively as possible, so, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Cochran?
Um, first off, thank you for talking about the, the, the Narcan. Um, a friend of mine. Another mutual friend moved in with her a couple of years ago and OD'd in her house and it's been very traumatic for her ever since. And if she had had Narcan at the house, I don't think that that would have happened, so. It's one, it's not something that you just need to think about for yourself, but also for a family member, a friend, you know, it's. Not a bad thing to have, um.
I have some in my car if anybody needs some after.
Uh, what I wanted to ask was, uh, you were discussing the, um, the work with. The corrections facility. Um, do you guys know of any work that's being done or are you currently working? With uh, the, the rescue missions?
Um, we have a relationship with the rescue missions, um, where we, we do work together, but not specifically on this. Um, but I know that we're open to that and there are discussions that I'm not a part of happening around those things and there are meetings. And those conversations, I am not as privy to that in my role. I, I write the grants.
Commissioner Koggo?
Thank you. Um, first of all, I want to thank you for what you do. I only have one question for you, the rest of my questions are probably for Director Wills or the manager. Um, for, I'm a man of faith, hence I believe in the Tigers and they won today. I have faith that the Tigers would win, so everybody knows.
I used to be a youth pastor.
Yeah, um, but do you all help um, people that are not faith-based or that don't?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you don't have to say a prayer, you don't have to love Jesus to receive our services, you don't have to go to a Bible study, you have to want help.
Awesome.
And we do it all from the love of Jesus and we hope that that pours through, the acceptance, welcoming joy, but. There is, that is not a requirement to receive any services because we, we're in the Sheldon Park neighborhood, I should have said that to Gekko. From the Gekko, we have five sober houses and the training center and then AC, AC therapy practice across. We're in the, we're in that corridor we've all been talking about today and everything we have is in within point four miles of our training center. So that it's walkable. Every service we have is walkable for our participants and then we offer eighteen hours of free programming. That's open to the public a week in our building. So everything from AA, NA to relationship classes to budgeting. And we have a job coach and all of those services are free and we have a recovery coach. All those services are open to the public. Um, housing, there's a fee involved with housing, um, but otherwise, and it, you just don't have to. You just have to be in recovery or be coming home from jail or prison, that's all we require.
I just met a gentleman, um, that's using the services and he's, he's a great guy. Um, my next question though for Director Wills, um, so basically. The city gets our funds sporadically. We don't have a dedicated team or group or even hired position to cover. Um, hey, we're spending the dollars here, here, and here. So if we vote tomorrow, tomorrow would be us voting. Um, to uh, funding and management agreement with the county. And then the county takes our money and it's a bigger pool and we can give it out to different resources around the county.
Yeah, a li- a little. A little unique, just because Muskegon County, I mean, they have their own program and so we'd be the first municipality among these six that would. Come alongside and partner with that grant program. And so we certainly want to make sure through uh, reporting and accounting that. Or have a seat at the table and receive information and participate in uh, consideration or approval of these grant requests. And um, make sure that the dollars that are going out are going to applicants or. City residents or applicants doing work within the city, um, for obvious reasons. And so that's why within the huge pot of money that they have. We just want to make sure that the hundred and seventy-one-ish that we have thus far. Be that accounting and we can know and give you the assurance that those dollars are benefiting the city resident, benefiting city residents, so.
My, my last question is, um, so these funds say that they'll come through twenty forty. We have great people at the county, I love our people at the county. If we agree to. Pour our money into this pot and something happened between now and twenty forty, could we change our mind?
Speculate that those dollars may not, you know, last through twenty forty. And so we do have a provision, I think it's thirty days notice that. Uh, or even on an annual basis, um, you know, we could get into year one and see how, what the participation rate's like and how effective. Dollars are, are spreading across the community and, and remove ourselves from that and then take another direction on the dollars that we continue to get.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koggo. Thanks, Mayor St. Clair.
I uh, am familiar with the agencies who are doing this work and. It makes all the sense in the world to me to support pooling the money. There's never enough resources for small. Community providers and there's infinite need. So if we can take. The portion that we have and combine it to support agencies who are already doing really good work. Um, that, you know, that just makes all the sense in the world to me. I know, um. I uh, interface with a lot of the agencies who are, are doing this work and I know they'll. They'll figure it out with or without the money that comes from us because that's what they've been doing for a long time, but I'm, I'm really. Pleased about the idea of the city getting behind that. It is. It is a, a wider community problem that I would like to see us find other ways to support besides the opioid dollars because. As I said, the need is immense, um. I carry Narcan in my bag every day and I get a new box of it every two years and thankfully I've never had to use it. But somebody OD's in our bathroom at work something like every three months. So it just hasn't been me that's walked in on them. So I think it is, it is such a big need in the community and anything that we can do to support bigger and better work being done, um, I absolutely want to get behind.
Thank you, Vice Mayor St. Clair. Anything else to ask or add, Commissioners? All right. Well, thank you much. Uh, this will be on our agenda tomorrow for, uh, consideration and vote. All right. Well, that concludes our work session, um, business items, presentations. We do have public comment. Uh, so, um, do you have any public comment forms down there? Have any been received?
We have not, no.
All right. Uh, so we do have in-person comment. If anyone wishes to give, uh, a comment right now, um, please raise your hand or complete the public comment form. Whereas we're going to go to the phones, I'm going to read that number, um, to get prepared, two, three, one, seven, two, four, six, seven, two, one. Do you want to speak? Oh, they're all back, sorry. They didn't go to the clerk. Thank you. Uh, first up, we have Jeremy Garcia, joining us from the Glen Side neighborhood. Welcome, sir. You have up to three minutes to write your remarks.
Uh, thank you. Um, I believe I had the privilege of meeting everyone here. Uh, obviously, we have a vote coming up on short-term transferability. Um, I want to take a quick second to talk about that. I would encourage the city to continue to focus on growing the housing stock, which the city's done a great job. You continue to plan for the long term. Uh, we've heard from many, uh, in different meetings about people purchasing a short-term rental and then transitioning here in the, in the long run, right? If we do that, we are taking that option away. I would also like to remind everyone that we as owners here are also constituents. We donate our time and community, much like other constituents do. Um, and another thing that I think is very important about our job is we help people fall in love with our own city, just like we do. So as you guys move forward, I just want you to think about some of the things I said and, uh, consider that for your.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Next up, we have Eric Shedd, joining us from the Nims neighborhood. Welcome, sir. You have up to three minutes to write your remarks.
Good, good, good. Um, just wanted to speak to the, uh, continued use of the short-term rentals upon sale. Uh, I've lived here almost all my whole life, been a Realtor in Muskegon for thirty-eight years. And I'm going to tie this in a little bit to, uh, non-conforming use of multiple family homes. So over the years of, and being in this industry, I've seen lots of changes in zoning in different neighborhoods. And what's always been the case, at least in my thirty-eight years as a Realtor, is when zoning has changed, as long as the house that was converted, let's say, to a duplex and it was conforming and allowed at the time of the change, when zoning changed and it was no longer conforming, so let's say it was zoned R2, became zoned R1 when they changed the master plan, that continued use was allowed. It's quite a burden to somebody to try to convert that, as long as you can show that it has been maintained that way, it's been used that way, it was allowed to continue. So I hate to see a precedent set that, hey, you followed the zoning, you followed the rules, you registered the property, now we're changing the zoning and you can continue to use it, but if you sell it, nobody else can. So to Jeremy's point, one that I have, the very first person who stayed there, fell in love with the town and ended up buying a house here. So we're providing a service. I think that you're creating a burden for people who, I'm going to use myself as an example, the one that I have, I put way more into that distressed property than I would have if I was going to flip it. Now, if I have a health change or something in my life changes, I have to sell that property, I'd have a tremendous burden that I wouldn't be able to sell for what I have invested at this time. So the biggest thing I fear is having a precedent of, we're changing the rules, now you can't use it that way or somebody else can't continue to. Well, when I have people come into town looking to invest, how do I tell them that, well, they might not change, if they ask, what if they change the rules on the zoning? I don't know how to answer that. Historically, continued use would be allowed. Now, I can't, I can't say that anymore. So I'm just worried about the image that we're going to have to people who are looking to invest here because we're being discovered. Lots of people coming in, excited about all the things and, you know, to the commission's credit and the city's credit, it used to be very difficult to do business here. When I first started doing this, uh, real estate. So I commend you guys, if you're open to hearing things. There's been a lot of tremendous growth in the city. It's a lot easier to work here. I don't hear contractors from other cities not wanting to work here anymore. It's become much easier to do business here and I hope that we continue that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shedd. Appreciate you joining us this evening. We have Chelsea Case, joining us from the Beechwood Bluffton neighborhood. Welcome. You have up to three minutes to write your remarks.
Good evening. I'm just going to talk about my personal experience owning one short-term rental, me personally. I was a public school teacher for about five years and towards the end of my career in that, I still work in education in a different respect. But, um, I put almost everything I had into buying one house that was already outfitted to be a vacation rental. I bought it as a vacation rental and I've actually been thinking about selling it lately because, yeah, there are, you know, Muskegon obviously is discovered, as the last person said, and there's a lot more competition for vacation rentals. So I've been thinking about selling it just because, you know, I'm not getting so much of a return as I thought. But then the moratorium came around. I didn't want to sell during then because that would make no sense. And I know that if the, uh, transferability of licenses is not an option, I don't feel like I will ever sell it because of value. I think it will affect the value. So, um, I'm just trying to speak personal experience, what I'm thinking. My husband and I also manage about fourteen rentals for many different owners. Some live out of state, some just don't, you know, it's their second home, they live in state. It's a lot of different backgrounds. And we've spoken to the owners and a lot of them are saying like, we're never going to sell if we can't transfer the licenses. So, um, that's just from my point of view. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Robert Velarte, joining us from the Beechwood Bluffton neighborhood. Roberto, I'm sorry.
I could repeat some of the things that both Chelsea said and the gentleman, the Realtor, who, uh, spoke about some of these, you know, changes that occur dur- during ownership and continued ability to use the property as you originally intended. In my case, just like with Chelsea, uh, some of the properties that I own, um, I designed them, uh, specifically to be used as short-term rentals. And when I pulled the permits for these properties, I had the blessing of the city. I had, there was no indication whatsoever that my ability to use these properties as short-term rentals or pass the property along as a short-term rental that never was mentioned or even suggested or, I mean, there was no way for me to predict that that might happen. I have pretty much poured, you know, every bit of my energy and all of my finances into these properties. And to have this change oppose, imposed on me would literally be a financial disaster. And, you know, I'm just asking, asking people to think about this, search your souls about, you know, y- you kind of have in your hands the ability to destroy some of us financially. And I just don't think that's fair. I don't think it's American and, uh, my, my parents both came to this country in the fifties with nothing in their pocket. And they both worked long and hard to build up some money, invest in some real estate. That was the American dream. And at a certain point in time, after I kind of retired from my profession as an architect, I chose to enter into that kind of investment myself. So my mother and I, my mother passed away a couple of years ago, but my mother and I, uh, invested together in properties and we have a couple long-term rentals and a couple short-term rentals. And that was an attempt to fulfill our American dream. And now, I mean, I'm, I'm worried, worried to death that not only my, my investment value is going to just go down the drain, but also my continued income from these properties is at imperil. And, uh, you know, I really just hope that people can think about the impact that that's going to have on some of us. So, um, we've been very good, uh, property owners. We have some nice properties. I, you know, the, the short-term rentals that we have, we use them as, as, uh, you know, summer rentals, but we've also housed people in the off-season who are looking to transition to buying a house here in Muskegon or need some kind of temporary housing because of some other circumstances. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have Ed Bodman, joining us from the Beechwood Bluffton neighborhood. And this is my final comment form. So folks at home, get ready to phone in if you do have any public comment. Uh, number's two, three, one, seven, two, four, six, seven, two, one. Mr. Bodman.
Hey, I'm Ed. I have a lot of friends down in Bluffton and Beechwood that don't like short-term rentals and, um, they speak loudly about that. And I get that. I, I, I don't want problems with neighbors either, but at the same time, those of us that have properties down there, we haven't been a problem. This, uh, city hasn't represented or shown that there are issues down there other than the sentiment or feelings of folks that are concerned about what could happen. We talk about using data for our, our, um, our decision-making. Um, I, I haven't seen it presented here. We've built a website that for people to complain on, they haven't used. We've had compliance concerns and I know all those things kind of don't matter because we've evolved to the point where we're looking at someone's quality of life. Well, the quality of life of all these folks in here that are short-term rental owners, um, they're going to be adversely impacted if you decide to not allow the transferability of our properties indefinitely. If you look at Grand Haven and other communities, they have not done what you're proposing doing tomorrow night. Just transferring a property once doesn't solve some of the challenges that we have. Who's going to invest in a property if they know they can't use it as a short-term rental? The houses that sit on the hill, the churches, the, 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 many different properties that have always been second homes down there need to be considered in this decision-making process. And I encourage you to maybe step back and take a look and, and talk with the, the folks that did all the housing study for you, Bowen, I believe was their name. They are capable of doing something for, for us that help us understand better what we need to do. This application of short-term, uh, uh, of taking away short-term rentals from owners and, and that put their livelihoods, it isn't fair. I think you know that and I know we're all sick of this and want to move on from it. But at the same time, I think taking that step is, is, is a step that, that hurts one party. Rather than all of us hurt a little bit and, and come to compromise and grow to, and live together, I, I, I don't like what I see that you're voting on tomorrow night. So I encourage you to vote no and step back from it. And, and, and yeah, who, who wants to talk about this further? None of us do. We want to get on with our lives, but at the same times, that's the best step. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bodman. All right. Before we go to phones, does anyone else in the audience that wishes to give public comment that has not spoken already? All right. Uh, we will take phone-in comments. That's two, three, one, seven, two, four, six, seven, two, one. If you're calling in, please turn down any audio in the background. Now it's your name and which neighborhood you're calling from, if you're a city resident. And if you're not a city resident, what other township, village or city you may be calling from?
We have a call there.
All right. Good evening. Hello?
Hello?
Good evening. If you, uh, cared to introduce yourself and, uh, which neighborhood or other city township, village you're calling from?
Yes, uh, it's Justin Advocater and, uh, from Muskegon County calling about, uh, the Beechwood Bluffton area.
Good evening. You have up to three minutes to write your remarks.
Great, thank you. Um, well, first and foremost, obviously, thank, you know, all the commissioners, obviously, uh, Mayor Ken and Jonathan, City Manager, for the time you guys put in effort. I mean, it's, uh, it's the, it's a thankless job and it's, uh, I know it's not fun and it's challenging at times, but appreciate what you guys do. Um, so I, I'm born and raised in Muskegon County and, you know, really excited about the turnaround that Muskegon has made. I think Muskegon has put itself on the map and is can, going to continue to put itself on the map with, with what we have to offer. And I, and I think it starts with the beachfront area and the pier market area. Um, it's, if you ask anyone, it's our biggest draw and it's why it's become such a big, big tourist destination and attraction for people. Um, I currently own two homes on Bee Street and the amount of people that come in, whether it's from Indiana, Illinois, Ohio, Texas, all over the place, that are coming for the first time, can't believe how nice Muskegon is and they can't wait to come back. We probably have between twenty-five, sixty percent of people that try to book and, and come back. And I think it's really exciting. Um, you know, the, their, the time they're, they're putting to come into, to Muskegon and they're choosing Muskegon over, you know, other places like Grand Haven, South Haven, um, up and down the lake shore, they're choosing to come from Muskegon. And that's where, that's where they, that's where they want to be. And, um, you know, we host anywhere from two to three families at times per house. And so there's, there's, there's a lot of people that are coming in and seeing what Muskegon has to offer. And I guess, you know, from my point of view is, um, you know, the Beechwood Bluffton area, I think it's getting targeted for, you know, this, the short-term rental cap that we want to, or that you guys, that the city is possibly voting on, that possibly they want to move forward, which the Beechwood Bluffton area frankly, is where everyone wants to stay. And families that come in that want to stay in the Airbnb or VRBO, want to stay in the Beechwood Bluffton area. It is what it is, we'll call spade a spade. And, you know, if we're okay with sending those people to Grand Haven, putting money in their city, putting money in South Haven, putting money in these other cities, then we got to be okay with it. But, you know, Grand Haven, for example, does not have a cap along their, call it the Beechwood Bluffton area, but along the water. And they're currently, from my conversations, they're currently at around ten percent. And they're allowed to transfer the homes every year, um, if they sell it, year after year, whatever it is. And, and also the North Shore area that got grandfathered in, those are still allowed to be rented and they're allowed to be sold as rentals. And so I, I think it's kind of a two-pronged approach. One is, you know, having a cap on, on these short-term rentals, I think it's detrimental to Muskegon and the amount of money that the, the can come into the city through tourists and also people that, hey, might want to move their business to Muskegon or might want to eventually buy a home in Muskegon, see in Muskegon for the first time. So having that as part of it, but also the transferability, not being able to transfer, allowing, allowing owners to transfer it on a sale, like us owners bought.
Thank you, Mr. Advocater.
Under, under no terms and now not being able to transfer, I think it's very unfortunate and unfair for those that, like myself, that believed and invested in Muskegon. So thanks for your guys' time, appreciate all your work and, uh, good luck with everything.
Thank you for calling in. Do we have any other people trying to call in during that time?
No.
Okay. We'll give that just another moment. All right. Well, that concludes our public comment period. Uh, Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner German, supported by Commissioner Kilgo, to adjourn. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Guys have it, we are adjourned. Thank you. Take care and be well.